Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of July 16th for the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Williams, Mr. Hart, Ms. Hartman, Mr. Adam, Mr. Lavenino.
I'm here. Please rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the July 9th meeting?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Let's move on to our honorary resolutions. If I can get a motion to approve A1 through A4, please.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, great. Let's move on to A1. Mr. Clerk.
Chair Lavenino, members of the board, item A1 is a resolution sponsored by Supervisor Williams. This is a resolution of accommodation honoring La Esperanza Santa Barbara Elite 2003 Girls Soccer Team as the winners of the International Copa de Arta Tournament in Santa Barbara's sister city of Puerto Vallarta, Mexico. And if the team could come on up to the podium. Team and coaching. I will read the resolution into the record. Whereas soccer is an important national pastime enjoyed by numerous Santa Barbara residents. And whereas the La Esperanza Santa Barbara Elite 2003 Girls Soccer Team is a group of top athletes who attend three local high schools and two of the local junior high schools in Santa Barbara. And whereas the team raised over $17,000 to travel and compete in the International Copa de Arta Tournament in Puerto Vallarta, Mexico in May, where they not only benefited from learning about another culture, they also volunteered at a local orphanage. And whereas Puerto Vallarta Jalisco, Mexico became a sister city to Santa Barbara in June of 1973. And whereas the FIFA World Women's Cup 2019 recently occurred in France with the United States Women's Soccer Team winning. And whereas women should be treated as equals to their male counterparts in all professions and particularly in sports. And whereas in 2016, five prominent members of the United States Women's National Team filed a complaint with the Eagle Opportunity Employment Commission against their employer, the United States Soccer Federation, for being paid considerably less than their male counterparts. And whereas the members of the La Esperanza Santa Barbara Elite 2003 Soccer Team have a bright future ahead of them, and that has begun with winning not only the championship in their age bracket, but most goals scored and also won the goalie penalty tournament. Now therefore, it be hereby ordered and resolved that this Board of Supervisors recognizes the La Esperanza Santa Barbara Elite 2003 Girls Soccer Team for their incredible achievement, passed and adopted today by the board.
Who scored the most goals? Oh, it's a team effort. I'm sorry. We're not supposed to single anybody out. Coach, come on up.
There's no "I" in "team," dude.
Well, thank you for honoring us here. The girls had a blast. It was a great experience for them. And, you know, we are looking at going again next year and seeing how that goes. And just thank these girls for playing an awesome game and thanking their parents for going and allowing them to go. And thank you, guys.
Awesome. Thanks. Alright, fantastic. Let's move to item A2, please.
Chair Lavenino, members of the board, item A2 is sponsored by Supervisor Hart. It's a resolution proclaiming the week of August 4th, 2019 through August 10, 2019 as National Health Center Week in Santa Barbara County. And Van De Renoso is here. Van, come on up. Doug Metz here today also. And Polly? Polly Baldwin? And anybody else you'd like to have come up? Whole team. I will read the resolution into the record. Whereas the Santa Barbara County Health Department has been providing medical services since 1926, has operated the health care for homeless program in the county since 1989. The public health department's five health care centers and three shelter-based clinics have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive primary health care in our county's underserved communities. And whereas the public health department health care centers are a health care home for over 25,000 people. Every day, the centers provide a wide range of services beyond primary care, including vision, behavioral health, pharmacy, and other medical specialty services to meet the needs and challenges of county residents. One in every 17 people in the county gets their care at Santa Barbara County Healthcare Center. And whereas healthcare centers reduce overall costs of care by helping manage patients' chronic conditions, keeping them out of costlier healthcare settings like hospital emergency rooms. And whereas healthcare centers are on the front lines of emerging healthcare crisis, providing access to care for veterans, addressing the opioid epidemic, and responding to public health threats in the wake of natural disasters. And whereas the National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to celebrate the dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first county healthcare centers opened their doors more than 40 years ago. Now therefore, it be hereby ordered and resolved that the County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the week of August 4th through 10, 2019 as National Health Center Week in Santa Barbara County, passed and adopted today.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. Thank you Supervisor Hart for this opportunity to recognize the critical work that our health centers do. As evidenced by the excellent results from our recent HERSA audit, we have a tremendously talented and committed staff in the health centers who provide direct patient care and who provide the infrastructure support. This team puts their best efforts daily to protect the health of our patients and our community by preventing disease and health conditions and as well as promoting wellness. So I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to a group of our staff.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Nadia Bedoya, and I am Medical Assistant for the Pediatric Department.
Good morning. My name is Miriam, and I'm in AOP2 with the Public Health.
Hi, my name is Catherine Cardness. I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner at the Franklin Clinic where I work with some amazing providers, back office staff, front office staff. It's really an honor to serve the county and the community in this way, and our patients really appreciate the excellent care that they get at the clinics. Thank you.
I'm Tessa Holcibus. I'm a nurse for the specialty clinics at the Santa Barbara Healthcare Center. Thank you.
I'm Skip Samansky. I serve as the Board Chair. I've been there since the origination of the Board. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Doug Metz. I'm very proud to present the folks who are on the front lines, examples of the dedicated staff from both Santa Barbara and the Franklin Healthcare Centers, and we appreciate this recognition. Thank you very much.
Great. Alright, let's go to item A3, please.
Chair Lavenino, members of the board, item 3, sponsored by our Chair Supervisor Lavenino, is a resolution proclaiming the week of July 21 through July 27, 2019 as pretrial probation and parole supervision week in Santa Barbara County. And our probation chief, Tanya Heitman, come on up with your team, and I will read the resolution into the record. Whereas during the week of July 21 through 27, 2019, probation, parole, community supervision officers, criminal justice, and juvenile justice professionals in communities all across America will join to celebrate pretrial probation and parole supervision week. And whereas the probation department today consists of over 320 dedicated professionals working collaboratively with other agencies and community partners to deliver evidence-based programs to adult juvenile offenders while focusing on the enhancement of safety, the reduction of recidivism, and protection of and compensation to victims, and the promotion of crime prevention services intervention, rehabilitation, and restorative justice principles. And whereas probation officers and juvenile institutional officers provide an efficient and cost-effective use of public resources by supervising nearly 356,000 adult probationers and approximately 31,000 juveniles statewide, within Santa Barbara County, locally supervising approximately 3,600 adults, including realigned officers and those under pretrial intensive supervision offenders, pardon me, as well as 411 juveniles, and managing approximately 600 cases in the intake process at any given time. And whereas during the probation department's 110 years of service, probation's role has evolved dramatically, and the department serves as an integral partner in local law enforcement and the criminal justice system. Probation Department staff possesses and displays a high degree of professionalism, commitment, and pride in the work they perform for the courts, in the institutions, and in the community, while striving to guide and direct offenders to become productive and successful citizens. Santa Barbara County probation officers and juvenile institution officers dedicate their lives to offend or rehabilitation and community safety in order to improve the quality of life for all of our citizens. And whereas the Santa Barbara Superior Court Pretrial Services Division has embraced as evidence-based risk assessment instrument in evaluating detainees' eligibility for pre-adjudication release in an effort to ensure public safety and to reduce recidivism. In partnership with the probation department, the Pretrial Services Division has employed greater pretrial supervision conditions to aid in that effort. Now therefore, it be hereby ordered and resolved that this Board of Supervisors and the County of Santa Barbara and the State of California hereby proclaim the week of July 21 through 27, 2019 as pretrial probation and parole supervision week, and recognizes these officers for their significant contributions to making Santa Barbara County a safer place to live, passed and adopted today.
Good morning, Chair Lavenino and Supervisors. I'm Tanya Heitman, Chief Probation Officer. Thank you for the opportunity to join with other community corrections agencies across the nation in recognizing the important work of pretrial probation and parole officers. The field of community corrections has rapidly evolved in recent years, and the sworn officers within the probation department have been hard at work adapting to these changes, and even now, they're in the midst of planning for additional reforms and legislative changes. It's an exciting time, but it can also be very challenging. I'm proud to be able to lead a department that's committed to serving the community and sees change as an opportunity rather than merely an inconvenience. Our officers recognize that while not easy, this work is very much worth doing well. And they're also very aware that our relationship with those we serve can be an important factor that propels them toward critical changes. Our officers are assigned primarily to three divisions: adult, juvenile, and institutions. With me today are three officers who will introduce themselves and tell you a little about their assignment and how it fits into the broader mission of the department.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Leslie Stam, and I am a Senior Deputy Probation Officer assigned to the Santa Maria Juvenile Court Services Unit as a juvenile intake officer. In this role, I'm responsible for reviewing all new law enforcement referrals and determining whether they are forwarded to the district attorney's office for consideration of filing of juvenile petitions. In considering whether intervention by the juvenile court is needed, or if the youth's needs can be met informally, a face-to-face meeting with the youth and their parents are made. The goal of the appointment is to gather information about the youth and family utilizing an evidence-based risk and needs assessment. This tool is used on youth currently supervised by the juvenile units in the Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, and Longoke offices. Based on the risks and needs, a case plan is developed with the youth and family with attainable goals for success. Whether the youth is new to probation or currently being supervised, the youth and their parents or guardians are provided with referrals to various community organizations for participation in evidence-based programming. These programs focus on drug and alcohol counseling, family counseling, mental health services, life skills, positive peer relationship, and trauma-based programming. By utilizing evidence-based program which focus on the risks and needs of youth, the probation department's goal is to provide youth and family with the necessary tools to create a successful future away from the criminal justice system. In addition, deputy probation officers must also be able to identify and recognize the difference between mental health issues versus criminal behavior, and ensure the youth and family are referred to the appropriate mental health treatment program. The ultimate goal of the probation department is to divert low-level offenses to community-based programs while providing intense supervision to more serious cases. Thank you.
Chairman Lavenino, members of the board, good morning. My name is David Silva. I'm a Senior Deputy Probation Officer for the County of Santa Barbara, assigned to the Santa Maria Juvenile Hall. In my current assignment at the juvenile hall, my role is multifaceted. I'm responsible for the implementation and facilitation of evidence-based programs such as moral reclamation therapy detained youth, and also work closely with Community Action Commission of Santa Barbara to work with youth to provide essential programming such as joven noble and reasoning and rehabilitation. I work closely with parents, grandparents, or guardians of the youth detained at the juvenile hall. I meet with each visiting family during the designated visitation times to answer any questions, provide information pertaining to school attendance, upcoming court dates, and an overall summary on their progress based on the incentive behavior management program. I use my bilingual skills to communicate with families which are Spanish-speaking to provide the necessary information they need. I'm the school liaison. I work hand-in-hand with Dos Portas High School staff, which is an accredited high school operated by juvenile court community schools through the Santa Barbara County Education Office. I work to address student progress, address behavioral concerns, and proudly host school graduations for youth who successfully earn their high school diplomas by successfully completing all their required academic credits while in custody. In fact, I'm proud to announce that three juvenile youth have just completed their required academic credits, and we're excited to be planning a high school graduation in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Awesome.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. I'm Deputy Probation Officer Joseph Contreras, and I've worked with the probation department for nearly 13 years. I'm currently assigned to the Adult Special Programs Unit and supervise a caseload of predominantly high-risk offenders. I'm tasked with supervising them in the community and supporting their compliance with court ordered conditions in the interest of public safety. In this way, the role of the probation officer in the criminal justice system is unique. In our department, we utilize case planning, targeting our clients' highest needs for successful reentry to the community, and then match our treatment referrals to address those needs. We work with people on our caseloads to take an inventory of those needs, such as a need for sober living environment, drug and alcohol treatment, or mental health treatment. By linking them with appropriate services and resources, we support them in their efforts to be productive and law-abiding, thereby reducing their risk to reoffend and promoting community safety. Many of the individuals on our caseloads have demonstrated a great propensity for violence and can be extremely resistant to change. As officers, we participate in extensive training both in field tactics and communication techniques such as motivational interviewing, which increases our ability to provide community supervision with a high degree of safety for our caseloads, partners, and the community. I stand here today proud to work for the Santa Barbara Probation Department and the County of Santa Barbara, representing all the men and women in the adult division who provide public service, safety, innovation, and accountability on a daily basis. With the support of Chief Heitman, we are focused on maintaining high standards for community supervision of offenders and for public service. I would like to thank our deputy chiefs for their involvement and unwavering support of probation services and public safety. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors for your ongoing support and commitment to keeping our community safe.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move to item 4.
Chair Lavenino, members of the board, item 4, again sponsored by our Chair Supervisor Lavenino, this is a resolution of accommodation honoring Sandy Blair as our Santa Barbara County Veteran of the Month. If Sandy could come on up to the podium. Thank you. I will read the resolution into the record. Whereas Sandy Blair enlisted in the United States Air Force in 1993 and served her country for 12 years until a medical condition forced her into an honorable discharge. And whereas Ms. Blair struggled to reintegrate into civilian life, suffering from depression and despair as she was continually told by her that her military skills overqualified her for the job she was applying for. And whereas Ms. Blair spent over a year waiting for the Veterans Administration to determine her eligibility for employment, training, education services, and medical benefits. And whereas during her transition struggle, she vowed to make a difference for other veterans caught up in the same predicament. And whereas after earning her real estate license in 2014, Sandy established a safe refuge for homeless female vets by opening a four-bedroom residential home to allow these women to re-establish a healthy lifestyle, build confidence, and feel safe while working towards a common goal of reintegration. And whereas in June of 2018, Sandy established Webbs Women Empowered Build Strong, a 501(c)(3) with the dream of building a tiny home farming community where women veterans can learn social, emotional, and professional skills that will help them rebuild their lives. And whereas Sandy Blair has taken the negative experiences she had transitioning from military to civilian life and transformed that experience into an opportunity to assist and uplift others struggling with the same issue. Now therefore, it be hereby ordered and resolved with this Board of Supervisors, because of her incredible spirit and tenacious effort on behalf of other veterans, recognizes Sandy Blair and is hereby honored as Santa Barbara County's Veteran of the Month, passed and adopted today.
It's always difficult picking a Veteran of the Month for your district. This one stood out for a number of reasons, but one of the things that I find in this job, that a lot of times you'll find a lot of people that it's easy to pinpoint things that we fall short on in this community. And there's no shortage of people that call at least my office and they'll point out what's wrong. But every once in a while, you come across somebody that sees something that's a problem and decides to fix it. And so the reason why I chose Sandy was her commitment to seeing something she saw as a loophole in the system of finding eligibility for benefits and folks that were struggling with integration, reintegration, and the civilian life. And instead of complaining about it, she decided to do something about it. And she is just a strong force in the community, especially for female veterans. I know she's got an event coming up that I hope she'll plug. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Sandy Blair.
Thank you so much, Chair Lavenino and Board of Supervisors. I am truly honored. Thank you. Operation Webbs, pretty much like you said, stemmed from my personal experience of not being able to have a smooth transition back to civilian life. And so it kind of developed over eight years of being separated from the military, and, you know, what can I do? And after law enforcement, and after moving out here to California, and having support of my father... of my family, I kind of pulled them into my dream of creating a safe space for women veterans to find that camaraderie and the support that they need to kind of get their footing back. And so my sister's lived in this county for maybe fifteen years now, and I came here just this month, five years ago. And it's, the support and the unity in Santa Barbara County is truly amazing. And at our ribbon cutting for our Orchid Stability Home last month, the turnout was beyond my expectation. And it just goes to show how much Santa Barbara County really cares about the safety and the well-being of their veterans. So I think I'm in the right place to do this, and I thank you all for this and the support. We now have two female veterans housed out of their car and out of the Good Sam Shelter, and we're looking to house our third one with the help of a phenomenal group of people at New Beginnings Santa Barbara County and SSVF, Good Sam, and the San Luis Obispo Veterans Collaborative. So just this entire network has been instrumental in making this happen. And we just finished our fiscal year in June, and we're going into our second year now. And we have a tiny house that we're building right now, and we plan to use that platform to hopefully introduce an idea for farming village for our veteran sisters to be able to rebuild their lives together with structure that they're used to and finding their purpose again. And so we do hope that we'll create a relationship with many of you in our community so that our sisters can know that they have more than what they think they have right now, which is nothing. And so yes, on September 7th, we will be hosting our second annual gala in Santa Maria at the Country Club, and our tickets go on sale next week, which you'll find on our website where to go purchase those. And again, it will be at the Santa Barbara, correction, the Santa Maria Country Club on September 7th. And the tiny home that we're building right now will be there on tour for everyone to experience and see. So I hope you can all come out and support us at that night.
Supervisor Hartman.
Would you send an announcement of your gala to all of us? We have distribution lists of our own that we could send out.
Wow, yes, I could certainly do that.
I'll get you all their contact information.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
And you want to give your website before you leave?
Yes, please. So again, it's Operation Webbs, it's just one operation, okay? Not operations, but Operation Webbs, W-E-B-S, Women Empowered Build Strong, and it's .org. So OperationWebbs.org, O-R-G. Thank you again for this honor, and have a great day.
All right, Sandy, thank you. Can we just end there? We've got to keep going, all right. Motion to adjourn. By the way, just a reminder, is next month we'll be rotating back to the first district for Veteran of the Month. So, all right, so that ends our honorary resolutions. Do any board members have any agenda items that they would like to pull? A-10.
And I just briefly want to pull A-23 just to highlight it, not to have a separate vote.
Okay, A-23. And does the public have any administrative items they'd like to pull?
We have a request on item A-9.
A-9. All right, why don't we start with nine, and let's read that into the record, please.
Chair Levinino, members of the board, item A-9 is from Community Services. It's considered recommendations regarding a one-time waiver of fees for the use of the courthouse sun and gardens by Old Spanish Days Fiesta. This is for July 25 through August 5, 2019, in the first district. And we have Barbara Carroll. Barbara?
Good morning, everyone. I asked for public comment because it was suggested that I be here in case any of you had questions that you needed Old Spanish Days to answer, so here I am. And if you do not, I would otherwise ask that you adopt the recommendation as it was presented.
Okay, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
I don't think it's going to be a problem.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Great. All right, let's move to, oh, Supervisor Williams.
Just make a comment. I think one of the outstanding issues with Old Spanish Days that we want to still work out, and then I checked in with the courts about to make sure they were supportive, is the ability of Old Spanish Days to restrict some of the space during Fiesta in the courthouse because they have in the past been sued for someone who, just a member of the public wandering around during a show, who tripped and fell. And so that's an ongoing fiscal, that's a way the county can help without spending any money, is to give some site control. So I just want to keep on highlighting that issue. It's one of the outstanding issues.
Okay, very good. Let's move to A-10.
Chair Levinino, members of the board, item A-10 also from Community Services. This is regarding an application for the California Department of Conservation Local and Regional Planning Grant Program.
Supervisor Adam.
Yeah, I'm just wondering where the information is in the grant application.
The grant application is still being prepared, so we don't have the actual grant application complete yet.
Okay, so what you're asking us to do is delegate a blank check to you that we can't see what we're asking for, and we're not coming back because what you're asking for is a variance from our normal course of action where it comes back here and then we approve it?
I can provide you with some details of the actual grant application. So specifically, the project would identify existing carbon stock, model some different strategies to determine their greenhouse gas emissions reductions, and then take those strategies and embed them into the update of our E-CAP, which we'll be updating. The grant is a planning grant, so part of what happens during the process is that we develop those actual strategies.
Well, actually, I just find this really troubling because the public cannot be on notice. I don't know how, Mr. Guzoni, is this something that really is something we can do? Is it to adopt a blank application and then have it filled out later and not have it come back for approval?
Chair and Supervisors, this is the item of defensible delegation, is one we've addressed before, and in this case, at Recommended Actions C, a tool that other caseloads has found adequate as a concurrence vehicle with County Council, Auditor, Controller, and Risk Manager. So it's a policy call for the board. If you would wish to put further limitations on it, that's something you could do today also, whether by dollar amount or some other manner.
Okay, well, I think that we violated the public notification, the moral obligation, I guess we have, in my opinion, that we usually go through a public notification process. And if we had the application filled out, maybe people would have shown up for public comment, and we don't know because we don't even know what we're going to be asking for. And then we're all tied in, you don't really need to comment on it further. I guess I want a roll call vote on it because, you know, I just am troubled by the fact that we're delegating not only the application without having seen it, but when it comes back, you know, what they're asking for is to just be able to move forward with it and never bring it back to us again. And so I'm out on that.
Chair Levinino, members of the board, I did want to make one comment. The timing for submitting this application was relatively tight, it's due on July 31st. So to be able to get to the board and get approval to move forward, this was really the only path forward for us.
So that was going to be my question, is so the application, they didn't announce it until May 31st. So how did the state, I mean, how does the state expect us in two months to come up with a grant application for something as detailed as this and have time for us to be able to present it to the public and get input for it? Is there any request for a time extension? I share Supervisor Adam's concerns. I mean, it's something I'm interested in, but it's also, I think it's incumbent upon us to be as transparent as possible and let people know what possibilities are.
Agreed. I mean, I can't speak for the state. Typically, they do have pretty tight turnaround times. We do have plans to do some outreach. We're on the agenda to speak at the Ag Advisory Committee to talk and get input from them on this.
But it's over at that point, by the time they get any input on it. Yeah, but Supervisor, did you want to ask, or Supervisor Hart?
Could you describe a bit what your process is for planning and what it would lead to?
Sure. So we would be working with planning and development. So the first step of the process would be using a tool called TERR Account to identify the carbon currently being stored in ag and natural lands. That tool can also be used to model different scenarios and, you know, inputs like carbon sequestration and determine the GHG reduction emissions that would result from that specific activity. Then that information would be taken and potentially put into the E-CAP as a strategy as part of the update process. And the E-CAP would go through a pretty extensive public outreach process.
So one reason I'm interested in this is its potential way to get cap and trade money to agriculturalists for carbon sequestration, and this is kind of creating the groundwork for that.
It is, and just to be really clear, the goal of the grant is to preserve ag land and natural working lands.
All right, so just for the benefit of everybody, when you're talking about a cap today, we're talking about the Climate Action Plan.
Correct.
Okay. Supervisor Hart.
Yeah, so the way I understand it is that staff is asking for authority to go seek state grant funds to help pay for staff and consultant work that would give information that would be included in the future update of the Climate Action Plan that the board will then review and pass judgment on. So what we're really doing is we're taking advantage of state resources to help supplement our local staff's work effort to get the best available science and information to bring to our board for us to approve a future date and time. That sounds pretty benign to me, that sounds actually like a good thing, and I appreciate you taking the initiative to go and seek out state grant funds to help us do our work. That's one of the hardest things we have, is trying to find additional resources to bring to these complex problems, and I think that's a great thing.
Supervisor Adam.
Yeah, I just want to read two sentences out of the resolution. Said procedures require a resolution certifying the approval of an application by the applicant's governing board before submission of said application to the state. So that means that we're supposed to approve the application, and I would assume that good faith would be required or would require that we fill it out, just saying. The applicant, if selected, will enter into an agreement with the state of California to carry out the project. So that's in the resolution. And so what we're doing here is we're agreeing in advance to enter into this thing that we don't, we can't tell what it is because we never filled out the application. So if you want to vote yes on that, well, let's just have the roll call.
Mr. Guzoni.
Chair and Supervisors, just to help with the board's options, within the materials, there's a description of applying for a grant up to $200,000, and if it would help the board with this item, the recommended actions could be amended to say submit a grant application in an amount up to $200,000 if the board would like. You could also direct reporting back after execution of the grant, even whether live or in writing to the board. So those are options for the board today also.
Supervisor Hartman.
Let me just ask Supervisor Adam, would any of those options bring you along to vote for this?
You know, I was out of my mind at the moment.
Then I move the item as is.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
All right, we have a motion to move item A-10 as presented.
Seconded.
Seconded by Supervisor Hart. We'll do a roll call, please.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Adam?
No.
Mr. Levinino?
Abstained.
Passes three ayes, one abstention, one no.
Okay, that then takes us to item A-23.
I just pulled this item, oh, go ahead.
Chair Levinino, members of the board, item A-23 is from Public Works. It's considered recommendations regarding the Randall Road Debris Basin Environmental Impact Report. This is in the first district.
I just pulled this to highlight that the item, this is our Public Works Department moving forward with the due diligence needed to construct a debris basin on Randall Road, something desperately needed by the community of Montecito, and shows the county doing proactive action to prevent further flood or debris flow.
All right, and we don't need a separate vote on that. Okay. Can I get a motion to move the balance of the administrative agenda?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Balance passes unanimously. Okay, would you not have a CEO's report? We're going to move into public comment. So these are for items not on today's agenda.
Chair Levinino, members of the board, we have eight requests to speak, and we're going to start in Santa Maria with Dave Clary.
And usually I just speak on cannabis, so I'm stretching it a little bit here, but it's, I want to comment on what was attributed to Supervisor Levinino's comments at the last meeting, which I do consider important, but I would take issue with some of the points. His comment to the tenor that the, most of the people attending meetings that deal with issues that are possibly job-creating tended to be among the wealthiest residents of the county. And if we just focus for the moment on the Cat Canyon oil expansion of some 700 steam-generating wells, you know, there are a lot of us in the general region area that are affected that are very concerned. I wouldn't say that most of the people in Siskiyou, Hungary are among the wealthy, but the issue is a lot broader than our local interests. California has led the effort to deal with global warming despite the atmosphere in Washington, and we should be part of that. And if this is considered just to be an issue that is mostly opposed by the wealthy in the county, I think we need to look at the worldwide demonstrations by young people who are, feel that we are not doing enough to cope with global warming. That's a major issue in the whole Cat Canyon project. And another issue, at the last meeting, if we looked around, you know, on July 9th, which dealt with the cannabis issue, that was the main focus of so many speakers, if we looked around at the audience in that group, I would bet, I could be wrong, bet, sir, you know, you can win or lose, that the wealthiest individual was not the owner of the major winery, but a scofflaw grower from Teppis Cay Canyon who was in the audience. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're back to Santa Barbara for Ren Strong, to be followed by Theodore Fones.
Hello, Chair and Counsel. Mr. Williams, good to see you. My name's Ren Strong, and by the way, tell your mom hello, I've ran into her, I'm sure you know, we were Facebook friends at one point. I'm here to speak to the constituents and to you, of course, and those that are at home. By the way, I'm going to have another three minutes, by the next gentleman's going to pass this on.
No, we don't do that, so.
You don't do that here?
Nope, you're on your own three.
Okay, well, just to let you know, I'm grateful that we have not had, since right before 4th of July, not had cloud seeding, which, that's what you guys call it, solar radiation management, aerosol injection dispersment, shooting aluminum barium strontium in our skies. So I'm grateful that that's. So, I'm grateful that that's not going on, leaving out, when they leave out of Air Force Base of Vandenberg. Ford Hunter Liggett, I've been in San Luis Obispo, by the way. I've spoken 18 times in front of mayor councils. But this is about spraying our skies, the dementia and Alzheimer's being on the, on the uprise, right? There's reason. So, you guys know about this, and you're staying quiet. The people at home need to come here and actually fill this room up. So, just to let you know, we have 5G millimeter microwave radiation technology, too. So, what happens when you put metal into a microwave? You know what happens. So, that's what's happening to us because we have globalist eugenicists, and we have council mayors, council, Board of Supervisors that are allowing this to happen and not speaking up. We have Operation Mockingbird, which is the fake media. Look it up, Operation Mockingbird. So, we need to understand that our lives are really in danger here, and this deployment that is going on of this 5G every 500 feet that they have to put these microcell towers up is not, not cool at all, is not in the best interest of us since we've had depopulation programs going on for a long time. So, I like to call out the five, you know, top things, poisoning our air, our water, our food. Why, and I got another thing, since I have 44 seconds left, and by the way, look up zero Z E R O 5G dot com. You can find out about it, zero geoengineering dot com, and you can actually watch a film called Franken Skies the Movie dot com. So, these are, when we have fluoride putting in our water, we got, we got roundup that there's lawsuits that have, that have occurred and that are going through, but we're still selling this crap in our, in our stores, in these hardware stores. That's, that's just, that is the corruption that we're talking about, and you all know about it. So, since I've spoken in front of mayor councils up in San Luis Obispo, California Coastal Commissions 18 times, so we need people to come here and get involved and speak up about these injustices. So.
Thank you.
And if I had extra minutes, I'd be asking you, what are you going to do under Senate Report 93 dash 549 to protect we, the people? So, when we can get other people to talk about this?
Yep.
Then we can have this happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, this is really important.
All right. That's why.
So, it's Theodore.
All right.
Theodore, Theodore, are you going to speak?
And before, before you come up, okay.
All right, we're going to move ahead then to Ed Kolaszky.
All right. So, the other thing is, just, we have to do this every time. If you agree with somebody, this. If you don't, don't boo, don't hiss, don't clap. It's just, okay? All right. Mr. Kolaszky, you're up.
I call my talk today. Alex switched our drawings, but he didn't tell Lori and Valerie, who are members of the Board of Architectural Review. We've been trying to remodel our house by locating the second story over the dining room, the kitchen, laundry room, and the garage. They ruled that our second story is solely over the garage, therefore in violation of Guideline 4.7, and you can't do anything about it. So, I think I'm finally getting through to Lori and Valerie. They're finally realizing that they never saw this drawing, that when I tried to present it back in June of 2014, Alex kicked us out and would not let us see this drawing. They, instead, Alex submitted our old drawing, which was solely over the garage. So, our government here wouldn't lie, cheat, and steal just to get a few extra bucks, would they? And besides, all I have to do is make it such that the second story is not solely over the garage, when it's not solely over the garage to begin with. In other words, I should have paid the extortion payment and just moved on from there, and one of our supervisors has even suggested that I had many opportunities. Well, no one gets hurt with this, do they? No one suffers. No one dies. I suffered. My blood pressure went over 200. I didn't know at that time that I was close to dying. I lost five years of my life coming down here. For what? For nothing. Oh, we put the other one up again. This is a friend of mine, Joanne. She died. You know, they were going to come out in 2014 to stay at our place. Of course, couldn't because I didn't remodel. They were going to come out in 2015. They decided, well, they'll go to Vegas instead, and they did. She contracted a brain disease. She was dead one month later, just like that, gone. That was the last time I saw her, was when she was in Santa Barbara here. So, no one suffers? Is this the way it goes? It's not really an important problem? Why is Alex Pujol still there? Isn't it time to do something? You know, one of the titles was find the problem and fix it. Well, it's time for you to find the problem and fix it. Do you expect him that all of a sudden he's going to do the right thing, which nobody's looking anyways? Nobody's accountable here, especially when we had Janet Wolf here. She looked the other way. I couldn't even talk to her. She was the biggest problem of all, and I think she instigated Alex Pujol to do these things. And we had Ann Almy. Fortunately, Janet's retired, and Ann Almy has retired. Thank goodness. Please do something. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lee Muldaver, to be followed by Jay Freeman.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Lee Muldaver, speaking on behalf today of the Citizens Planning Association of Santa Barbara County, 59 years young, getting younger every day. I wanted to remind each of you, and we'll probably be sending you something electronically, that on Saturday, July 27th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, three blocks down the street at the historic Pico Adobe, we're going to be at our annual meeting presenting awards for career achievement to two really distinguished individuals that I think most of you up here know pretty well. The first is Art Hibbits and his family for a multi-generational career in food and fiber, working landscapes, sustainable agriculture, and civic engagement, where he was a key voice in helping draft the original agricultural element of the general plan and the Right to Farm Ordinance, which supports working landscapes today. The other one whom I know you all know because he worked for you for over 30 years is Bill Dillon, who is in semi-retirement from the county council's office, where during that time, he represented the county in the drive for clean air, effective regional governance, as Mr. Hart knows, effective legal counsel with big-hearted, caring organizations like the State Transportation Commission, the Governor's Office, HCD, and our beloved friend Caltrans. He also worked with Fortune 500 companies to make sure that the highest level of safeguards for permitting for on- and offshore energy development and transport were followed. So often, the essential work of the men and women in the county council's office, not only to make wise suggestions and innovations in language and policy, but also to prudently avoid pitfalls which might get us less than the highest standards or expose us to risk. Those men and women accepted these honorary ceremonies that you begin your meeting with are too often taken for granted and too often ignored. Bill Dillon's career with the county council's office has been really exemplary, as the Hibbits family has been in agriculture. And I would hope that all of you who are in town are able to join us at 1:00 PM on Saturday, July 27th, at the Pico Adobe, to help us recognize the Art Hibbits family and Bill Dillon for exceptional work tendered over long and distinguished careers and lifetimes. Thank you so much for all you do, and have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Jay Freeman, sir next speaker, to be followed by Paul Boring.
Hello.
Good morning.
So, you have an agenda item today that's about cannabis regulation, but cultivation. My comment is not at all about cultivation. So, my name is Jay Freeman. I'm on the board of the Ilovisde Community Service District, but I am not at all representing them today. Three years ago, for about a year and a half, I was a vice president of the Ilovisde Downtown Business Association. Well, during the year and a half it was active, I was the vice president of the Ilovisde Downtown Business Association. I attend meetings of the Ilovisde Community Network regularly. A month ago, county staff member, Dennis Bassanich, came and gave an excellent presentation to us about the current state of the cannabis business retail licensing regulations, and I have a comment on that. So, first of all, it is, has been updated, so there's now one per planning area, which I think is a great change in comparison to the two per supervisory district, those before. But what that means is, is that who is, becomes that business is extremely important to the character of how that business operates in the community. We have, we have in our area multiple bike shops, multiple pizza restaurants, we have multiple banks, and if you have an issue with one, you go to another one, which because it is then so important who that one is, I was dismayed to hear that the algorithm that was going to be used in order to decide who got that permit was random selection. And even further, random selection per person, per location, which seems like it would immediately open the door up to, oh, I've got a location that's allowed to have this permit, I will work together with my business partners to establish a number of separate business entities because the way that the rule was written is very explicitly person is a business entity, and then we can all apply and kind of collect the randomness towards my endeavor. And this is what the general manager of the Ilovisde Food Co-op, which is one of the few properties in our area that is allowed to, is actually zoned for this purpose, what she calls their lived experience of people coming to them, asking and saying, well, how about you just allow me to, you know, sub-license from you some space, and we will become part of your, your location, and then we will be able to file for this permit. So, I would really love to see a process that has more, more input into who is going to end up being the, the business that ends up getting the retail license in the area. I think that there should be a process that tries to remove the gamability of the randomness selection, and I really just generally like to see more opportunity for people to comment on how this part of it operates. I just, I see so many meetings about cultivation, and I see so very few opportunities to, to talk about the retail permits. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Paul Boring, sir next speaker, to be followed by Viviana Saavedra.
Hi, welcome.
Can you bring the microphone down just a little bit so we can hear you? Good. Perfect.
I'm here to talk about a, an appellate law that was, an opinion was written in 2017 regarding camping. I think, I think everyone here has information or knows about this. It's about, it's about the homeless, it's about those that are the least of these. It's not about the alcoholics or the drunks that many would like to say they are, because most of them really aren't. And if they are, they've got a worthiness and an unworthiness problem in their life. They've had promise after promise after promise to have second chance opportunities at employment, and the nicest guys in the world that own the businesses that tell them, come back next week is just another way for them to feel not so bad about, I'm not going to hire you because you're homeless. These are the, some of the, these are some of the problems that we all need together to address and find ways to make a better society for all of us, including the least of these. So, if I could leave you with one thing, we have parks all over the country, we have parks right here in this county. Seems like parks personnel doesn't want to accept the fact that public land is a park. This law right here addresses public land as a place for the homeless to be able to go and lay their head, sleep, lay, and rest. This land, this land is not shut off at 8:00 at night and turned on at 9:00 in the morning. Whatever your hours are that you put on these parks, these parks are public lands from, from 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So, if we do anything positive, I would like to see the legal department of the county to look at this law and adjust the ordinances accordingly to this law, so that law enforcement has a better way of dealing with the problem. They don't have to call us, they don't have to call to see if there's a home, a bed open or not when there just isn't. And, and, and I believe that, that we can do a better job of addressing homeless folks as citizens, your neighbors, new and old. Thank you.
Thank you.
Viviana Saavedra, to be followed by Steve Decker, who's our final speaker.
Good morning. My name is Viviana Saavedra, and I am here today with my coworkers. We are in-home care workers representing UDW, United Domestic Workers. And, you know, I was shopping for a birthday card yesterday, and it said, happy birthday, it's your day, so you can forget reason and then ignore its evil twin logic. Well, it's not your birthday, so please pay attention. We're in bargaining, and bargaining is not going well, and it's not going even as well as several years ago. And so, I want to bring that to your attention for a couple of reasons, because we are the lowest-paid county workers, and it's time we do some catch-up. So, we're asking for that rate increase. And what's truly disturbing is if you treat this program IHSS like a burden, then, you know, we also, as in-home care workers, become a burden, burden. We're not a burden, we're actually a benefit. You know, it costs four times more to send people to an institution, whether it be a nursing home or a convalescent center. So, we are actually saving you money. And you know, for every five cents you put in, you're going to get a dollar's worth of return. So, I ask you to take seriously the request package and make sure that you're getting accurate information from your staff, because that didn't happen the last time. We'd like it to happen this time, that you get accurate information, that they are calculating your expenses accurately, and that, number two, you know, for the second time, I know we're a female workforce, but we're not dumb. We honestly do know the benefit of pulling our money together and making sure that we can get a good dental vision package with that money. We know that can happen. Have you tried reading a prescription bottle with glasses that are 10 years old? That does no benefit to the caregiver, it does no benefit to the client. So, it's really important, we remember that those are important benefits, which we do not have. We don't have a pension plan with you either. Keep that in mind of all those other benefits. We need to catch up. Also, keep in mind, San Luis Obispo County, during their last negotiations, they got a pay increase, they got dental vision, they got a training budget, and lastly, they even were providing gloves to in-home caregivers so that they are able to protect themselves and the clients when they do work that is dangerous work. I always remind people, two dangerous things, blood, blood products, and poop. You know what? We need to protect everybody in this instance, so we need to take that seriously. Again, we have a request package on the table, you can rise to the occasion, treat it seriously. We are women, but we are absolutely adamant about this particular package. So, I thank you for your attention.
Steve Decker.
Chairman Lavigno, members of the board, my name is Steve Decker, and I'm speaking today not about my position in the cannabis industry, I'm speaking to you as a citizen of this county. I'm 32-year resident here. I came here in 1987, came here with my two small children to raise by my previous marriage. I was starting a new life, I was hoping to prosper in this county, and fast forward 32 years later, it is a hell of a difficult thing to prosper in this county. Back in the early days of the 1990s, we had a crisis in this county with water supplies, and it was one of the reasons that was inhibiting economic growth on the South Coast and other parts of the county. I formed a committee to get state water approved in South County and around the, around the rest of the county, and we were successful, and that, I'm very, very proud to say that that supplemental water supply that dumped in the Lake Atuma got us through the last drought, and that was a wonderful thing. But we had adversaries to that concept of having a balanced water supply that fought vociferously, and some of them are even in this room today. I remember them well. Good people, they had their positions, but they opposed having balanced water supplies for everybody. And my little quick story is about the woman, 90-year-old lady, sent me a dollar with a letter saying, I lived here all my life, I can't afford with the high water rates to water my plants, I'd have a bucket in my shower to water my plants. So, this is the types of things that inhibit prosperity, inhibit equality of life and so forth, where people oppose advancements in our systems. Fast forward 32 years later, here we are again with a watershed moment about new industries in our county and so forth, and industry that's offering to pay very high wages, better wages than average, and we're having resistance to it again. Some of the concerns are valid, but they are misplaced because they don't understand the provisions in the ordinance that take care of their concerns. So, all I'm doing here today as a citizen, with 32-year history of being in this county, knowing how it goes, what happens and so forth, to push knowing how it goes, what happens and so forth, to push forward, get things working right, get good jobs in the county, let's prosper, let's let it grow. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay. Very good. So that closes out our public comment, which will move us to our departmental agenda items for the day. Can we read in departmental agenda item one?
Chair Lavenino, members of the board, item number one is from Planning and Development. This is regarding the Patterson Avenue Holdings new office appeal filed by Paul Bradford of the Planning Commission's December 5, 2018 approval of that case number 16 DVP 13 and 16 BAR 154. This is in the 2nd District, and we have a request to continue this item to September 10th.
All right, very good. We have a departmental request to continue this item. Can I get a motion to that effect, please?
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, we'll hear that on September 10th. Let's move to item number two, please.
Chair Lavenino, members of the board, item number two is from the Sheriff's Department. This is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding an extra help services and retirement waiver for the Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Chair Lavenino, members of the board. Commander Ryan Sullivan, on behalf of the Sheriff's Office. This item is to request an extra help waiver for Catherine Dorsey. She was a Department Business Specialist II in the Sheriff's Office, who was assigned to the inmate services bureau. She was primarily responsible for billing and rectification of billing for inmate telephone, commissary, educational tracking for the sheriff's treatment program, as well as legal research liaison duties. She notified us in early June of her pending retirement, which was effective on July 14th, and we are requesting approval to bring her back in an extra help capacity on a part-time basis to continue the duty she's doing, but also to train her replacement, once we've identified that. We do plan on reallocating that position, or reclassifying that position, I'm sorry, and generating some cost savings in that regard, but we would like her to come back and be able to show the next person the duties that they'll be doing.
Very good. Is there any public comment on this matter?
No request to speak.
All right, let's go to Supervisor Adam. Cue up speech number 73.
Yeah, really, man, just press play again. You know, if somebody's over there for over 30 years, you know, there's, there's something called Stein's Law that says that anything that cannot go on forever doesn't. And so you have a person there that's over 30 years, I mean, you would think that, you know, it, it can hardly be unexpected that this person retires. You know, there's not that many people here that have been here for over 30 years, so, you know, this is, this is one of them, and so, you know, it's, I, I just am amazed every time somebody continues to bring one of these things in, you know, did we not think that there was going to be a time when they weren't with us anymore and start training somebody that could take over?
Supervisor Adam, to the chair. Your point is well taken, however, this is the only Department Business Specialist II position we have in the county, and we did plan on reclassifying that position, but we wanted to wait until that position was vacant to reclass it, and to reallocate some of the duties and responsibilities with that position, and we felt like this was the appropriate time to do that, when she did retire.
So then we got to bring her back, and then what's the vision? We're going to go ahead and reclassify with her here as an extra help, and then, then we're going to refill it?
Correct. Our plan is to reclassify the position to a lower salary band. This position is also fully funded out of the MA Welfare Fund, it does not come out of the General Fund, and our expectation is that Ms. Dorsey would fill a short-term need on a part-time basis to train and help that person get up to speed.
Okay, well, that's...
That's the best answer we've had so far.
That is, that's legit. Okay, I'll vote for it.
No wonder why you got promoted to commander, look at that, geez. He's all over it.
You need to get into sales.
All right, can I get a motion?
Move staff's recommendation.
All right. You got a second by Supervisor Adam on it. Yeah, you did do a good job, yeah. You might as well be on it. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Fantastic. All right, before we take item three, been requested to take, let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back with item three.
God, this could go faster, you know. This...
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to get started, please. All right, thank you very much. We'll move to item D3. Mr. Clerk, can you read it in, please?
Chair Levinino, members of the Board, item 3 is from the County Executive Office. It's a hearing to consider recommendations regarding cannabis business licenses, Chapter 50, potential amendments.
Okay, so this item was continued. We finished up our public comment from last week in the... Got to give a shout out to staff for their ability to continue public comment even after a power outage, and very creative. We've got MacGyver on the county staff, so that helped. So, we are now moving to deliberations, and don't know if... Dennis, if you want to make any comments to start, we'll kick it to Mr. Bezannich as staff.
No comments from staff.
Okay, I will open it up to the board members. Supervisor Hartman, and then Supervisor Williams.
Thank you, Chair Levinino. I don't know how you would like to structure our discussion. I have four issues that I'd like to put on. If they get all mixed up, it's a little harder, I think.
Okay, why don't you identify those four, and then we'll figure out how we want to deal with them.
In our board letter, we had the option of creating a cap on cultivation. We also have some ideas, perhaps, about odor control. Then we've had a number of letters about boundaries around cities and EDRNs, the irregularity, and what we can do there. And finally, and very importantly, conflicts on Ag 2 across different sectors and the different agricultural crops.
Okay, very good. Let's go to just get some opening things here, and then we'll figure out how we're going to structure this. Supervisor Williams?
Or you want to do opening comments on a larger level, and then...
If you have any. So we'll stack the issues, and then we'll break this thing down.
Oh, okay. I didn't organize my stuff that way, but I'll try to adapt.
Well, how about this? Let's start with talking about caps. You want to talk about that, and what that is, what that means, how that's going to affect us, and we can break that out individually?
If I could...
Sure, Supervisor Adams.
If, in my effort to make the meetings more entertaining, I have written something here that I think provides some context, plus it gives me an opportunity to speak theatrically.
Oh, awesome. Are you going to do it in a special voice, or...
No, it's just me, but I'm just...
That's special.
That's special enough, thank you. Consider the lemon. How many dishes, main course, side, dessert, condiment, occasional accoutrement? Head nod to Supervisor Farr. Or garnish are lemons an ingredient in? Thousands. What would we do without Meyer or Lisbon lemons? Not to mention oranges, blood, navel, and Valencia. Grapefruits, pink and white. Tangerines and mandarins. What would we do without a wedge of lime in our gin and tonics? Or a twist in our Greyhounds? Key lime pie. And there is a spate of lesser-known citrus such as kumquats and pomelos that I will not name each of for lack of time. Suffice it to say that we have all these in our county, if not commercially, residentially. They could all be gone if we lose control of Asian citrus ciliad. And it sounds catastrophic to say this stuff, but it's really true, and I don't know, is Kathy Fisher here? Yeah. Okay, so when I get done with my little thing, maybe you could talk about this in a serious way for a while. Lemon orchards must be sprayed before harvest by state law to protect the state citrus industry and all backyard citrus plants from Asian citrus ciliad, the vector of hulang bing, or citrus greening disease. Once these pests are detected, and it is important to note that all detections so far have been in residential trees, the Secretary of... California Secretary of Agriculture will order that each tree be removed. If the population of ACP gets out of control, it is absolutely within the realm of possibility that nobody will have a citrus tree of any kind at their home, or in any commercial orchards will survive. I have heard many other conflicts between ag and cannabis over the last few days. We must protect the existing ag through the process of the expansion of cannabis. I think we all agree that at the end of the process, all ag should be viable, and that we want to preserve the widest possible array of crops in our county.
So, I think that falls under item 4, which would be conflict of ag?
Well, yeah, 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 yeah.
As we just identified it. So, when we get to that point, I know our ag commissioner is here, but I do want to take these in order, so if we could hold off on commenting on that, but we know what Supervisor Adams' positions are, I mean, at least thought process, and we're all going to discuss ag conflicts and what we hear, and how we're going to be able to deal with those. But what I kind of wanted to do was, if we can just start with caps and work our way through, as I think Supervisor Hartman laid out very well. So why don't we move to Supervisor Hart?
Yeah, I think I want to say a little bit to start things off, and the hearing that we had the other day really helped frame the discussion. We've got a lot of different strongly-held opinions on both sides, and the first thing that I thought about after our 11-hour meeting is a quote from a couple famous British philosophers who said very aptly, "You can't always get what you want, but if you try sometime, you find that you get what you need." And I think we need to figure out a way to find a better balance point in this conversation. Since coming to the Board, I was not part of the original drafting the ordinance, but since being here, I have voted to pull back on cannabis operations, try and put some limits on it, try and find a better balance point. One of the most interesting things I have learned, since coming from as being a city council member to being a member of the Board of Supervisors, is learning a little bit about agriculture. And Supervisor Adam has helped me understand a little bit more. I don't pretend to be an expert on agriculture, but the one thing that I have learned for sure is that it's very, very hard business. Generations of people have been trying to farm in our county for a very long time, and they have explained to me and spoken in public about the need to be adaptable and flexible, and to have, to be nimble in a changing marketplace. And that's something that is inevitably intertwined with this conversation, as we're having folks who are trying to migrate to a different crop, there's an impact on existing agriculture, and we have to figure out a way to go through that very complicated thicket. The intersection of farming and residential uses has always been contentious. That's why folks have these very strongly-held views. We have to respect the ability of farmers to do their work, and sometimes it's messy, and sometimes it's smelly, and yet residential neighbors start off looking at this thing and saying that we want to protect the sanctity of our homes and our neighborhoods, and we're not interested in dramatic change to the quality of our life. And government policy is at its best when the pendulum doesn't swing wildly from one end to the other. And I think we have to be very careful up here today to avoid that. You know, I think that the pendulum has swung too far toward cannabis cultivation in an unregulated way, and I think we need to pull it back, but we have to be very judicious and very careful about not going too far the other direction, too. Recently, City Councilmember Stuart Kasdan was advising the county from the Gleanedup City Council perspective, and he said, "When you're in a hole, the first thing you need to do is stop digging." I think he's right. I think we do need a county-wide cannabis cultivation cap on both acreage and operations. In a perfect world, if we were not constrained by the limitations that Mr. Guzanini is going to tell us about, I'd like that cap to be, you know, where it was a week ago, before we've had a little bit of a rush to the permit process, so that we would have time to digest what's in the pipeline. The issues are complicated. We don't have answers to a lot of the complexities of this, and I don't really think there's a way that this Board here today can get answers to all those questions. I'm increasingly understanding that this is not over today. This is the beginning of figuring out the refinements that can make these two industries and our community coexist. I do not accept the idea that there's a zero-sum win-lose in this conversation, but there is definitely going to be some change in regard to regulations. Like Supervisor Hartman, I think if you look at these things, you know, from the technical, specific issues about odor control and the technology necessary for that, there are differences, big differences, between the greenhouse operations in Carpinteria and outdoor cannabis. And I want all of our approach to these issues to be science and evidence-based. That is going to be particularly complicated and difficult, because folks are very polarized on these issues, and we don't have basic agreements about facts. You know, what has... What started out as concerns has migrated to worries and is now full-blown fear. And it is very difficult to pause and collect ourselves and force ourselves to look at these issues in a rigorous, technical way, not just sitting up here and saying, "Well, we have folks who think we ought to have setbacks and buffers. Let's throw out an additional 250 feet, or 1,500 feet, or a mile, or two miles." In all of my time in local government and looking at land use issues, I have never been part of a conversation where the range of discussion is from 250 feet to two miles in terms of setbacks. That is impossible to rationally approach. We need something, some way, to begin to get some science involved in what the differences are about outdoor odor impacts on Ag 2 parcels in other parts of the county versus indoor greenhouse regulation of odor control with technology. And similarly, we need to understand this conflict about pesticides that Supervisor Adams talked about. I don't pretend to be an expert about that. I want to hear from people who understand this better. I want to know that Santa Barbara County is doing the most aggressive effort it possibly can to minimize pesticide drift. I don't think... And all the people that I've spoken to about this issue, no one has credibly stood in front of me and said, "We want a policy that allows for pesticide drift to happen, and we want everybody just to turn their head and let what has happened in the past continue on." But what is reasonable and what is practical? We need people who understand this technology and these techniques at a very fine-grained level to help us, rather than saying, "Well, if you step back 150 feet, or 10 feet, or whatever, that that's going to solve the problem." The other huge issue that is that we all have to get our heads around is the prospect that the state of California is going to pass legislation that effectively takes away local control from local governments for hemp cultivation. So while we are consumed, rightly so, and focused in on cannabis regulation, if the state government says farmers can grow hemp without any restrictions or regulations, then there are going to be folks who say, "Okay, I can't get a permit to grow cannabis. I will grow hemp in the setbacks that you create. I will grow hemp in the Ag 2, 1 parcels that we have banned cannabis cultivation on, and we will find the same odor impacts, the same neighborhood impacts, the same traffic impacts that come from hemp that come from cannabis." So I don't have any answers to these things. It's unrealistic to imagine, you know, that we collectively today have a finished product and answers to all those things. So I'm going to be advocating for science-based, evidence-based process, taking our time to do this right. It's really the only way, at this point in time, I think we can get to a place where folks on both sides of this can at least feel as though they have been listened to and responded to.
Okay, very good. Who hasn't spoken yet? Everybody, I guess, has, so let's go to...
I think Dos.
Okay, Dos was first, then Supervisor Hartman, and Supervisor Adam again.
Well, I very much agree with the sentiments that Supervisor Hart articulated, because at a... You know, to me, the hardest part about this has been that the stakes are high on getting it wrong, either way. If we don't allow a legal path, then we have two major problems. We incentivize the black market, which has been a huge vector for crime, for the trafficking of hard drugs, for human trafficking, and for pesticides. The black market has been problematic on all those counts. And if we don't have a legal path, then we also invite hemp to swamp us without any land use regulation. However, if we have the door open too much, then the nuisance factor for residences and for other agricultural operations, which I would put it even in a different category than nuisance, much worse than that, is dramatic. And so I think the difficulty here has been calibrating the right amount that allows a reputable marijuana operators to operate, to employ people at good wages, to contribute tax revenues that help our public services, and at the same time, that doesn't pose a heavy nuisance for neighbors. So some of the things I'll propose today, you know, actually came from some of the groups that are critical of cannabis, and you might wonder when some of them are... Some members of those groups are doing their best to make me look like the devil, why I would take some of those proposals, because I just feel like there is an imperative in Carpinteria to find a way for us to live together. Not support a de facto ban, which some people have, I think, disingenuously put forward. They say, "I don't have a problem with marijuana in Carpinteria, but I support banning on Ag 1." Well, that's a complete ban in Carpinteria. So I don't support a complete ban, but I do support and will articulate, after we've gone through these five items, some additional ideas that I've vetted with County Council's office to try to put forward to abate nuisance, that's the biggest, and get at operations that are not conforming to our rules and are not operating with permits. But to the specific subject of a cap, I do support a cap. I think it's very difficult to figure out what the right cap is, because we do have a certain amount in process. And we have this quandary of how to measure it. It's been very confusing in Carpentry, even though I stand by my cap in Carpinteria, I... It's been confusing that we have a different measuring system than the state. I've like spent hours explaining it to people, and most of the time, it takes hours for anybody to understand it. That's... That is something for you all to wrestle with.
Well, and I'm going to go to Dennis.
So I guess I would be option 2 under caps, a cap calculated separately than the Carpinteria overlay.
Okay. So I'd like to go to Dennis at this point for kind of clarification. You know, I think we started off with a number in Carpinteria, thinking maybe it was X, and then we ended up with that, I think, that definition of what an acre or the cap acre meant. So before we even discuss whether we support a cap, or we don't support a cap, or how big the number should be, or small, I think we all need to be saying the same thing when we're talking about an acre.
We measure.
How do we measure it, and how does the state measure it?
Chair Levinino, members of the Board, in Section 50-677, the Board adopted language that said, "No more than 186 acres of cannabis cultivation, nurseries, and..."
acres of cannabis cultivation, nurseries, and micro businesses with cultivation shall be licensed at any one time within the boundaries of Area A and Area B of the Carpinteria Agricultural Overlay District as defined by the county ordinance 4529." And so from that, we've talked in the past with the board and with the public about the difference from how the state calculates canopy of mature plants for purposes of state licensing versus how we might calculate a cannabis operation to be inclusive of all plants, not just those that are mature and flowering, but their entire cannabis operation. So while it was not a change in how we calculated it, I think it was a clear application of the words that the board adopted in Chapter 50-7 that brought us to the conclusion that, if you were going to look at it from a series of, like a Venn diagram, canopy would be the smallest inside circle of mature plants, that's the state definition. Chapter 50-7 seems to define the cannabis cultivation operation as another larger concentric circle that includes other, other non-mature plants, as well as the processing rooms and other aspects of that cannabis operation that's connected with cultivation. And then that is another, inside of another concentric circle, or rectangular, or polygon, that is actually the parcel boundaries. And so if we think about it as kind of those concentric circles, I think it becomes helpful to think of it, we're targeting, in this definition of what acreage is counted, toward the carpenteria Ag overlay cap as the middle circle, not the smaller circle of the state.
So then, my second question would be then, in the EIR, when we mention acreage, what was, what did the EIR study?
So, I don't have the exact language there, but I believe it was 1,126 acres were calculated as part of the EIR. Look back, Dan gave me the thumbs up. So, so the 1,126 acres was taken actually from the registry data and used by the consultants who prepared the EIR, and they were non-definitive about whether that was the total cannabis operation, or were they utilizing data that was provided by many of the cultivators, whether that was the, you know, mature flowering plant or canopy. It's ill-defined in the EIR about what they were doing. I think the simplest explanation would be, people looked at what they were proposing, or what they were already doing in terms of the acreage of their cannabis operation. That's the number they plugged into the registry. The consultant took that data out of the registry and used that in doing their baseline analysis for the environmental impact report.
Okay. So, from your perspective, because, and for the public, you know, I just think the smartest thing is to align ourselves with the state, so that regardless if that number is smaller, larger, whatever it is, and that has to be decided. But I think the first thing we need to figure out is, when we bring up, I think our definition on a cap going forward on inland should be, so when a state regulator is looking at our permit, it matches up with what the state is also looking at. Is there a benefit for that?
Chair Levinino, and members of the board, and the public, there could be a benefit to that. I'd offer a couple of little caveats and thoughts here. First of all, in the state licensing system, cultivation licenses are graded by size, and, but nursery licenses, for example, are not size-determined, or greater than an acre.